When we go into post session.
Don't go live?
Oh, yeah.
Shut that down.
Recording is in progress.
Okay, everyone. Good evening. All the city council speakers for Monday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Go call, please.
Darren Miller?
Here.
Tracy Snyder?
Here.
Jen Mizias?
Here.
Tom Nigus?
Here.
Dave Anderson?
Here.
John Hopkins?
Here.
Jared Tremble?
Here.
All present.
Next is the pledge of allegiance.
I believe this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next item in the pool of city council minutes for March tenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve events to march. Meeting?
Second motion by Tom, second by Jen. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor.
Aye.
On line, opposed, motion carries. Next is the approval of monthly expenditures.
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly expenditures.
Second.
Okay, motion by Tom, second by Jen. Go call, please.
Jared Tremble?
Yes.
John Hopkins?
Yes.
Dave Anderson?
Yes.
Tom Nigus?
Yes.
Jen Mizias?
Yes.
Tracy Snyder?
Yes.
Darren Miller?
Yes.
Okay, and then, motion is approved. Next is public comments. Anyone here tonight who would like to step up and do a public comment? If so, please step towards the, you know.
Podium?
The podium, thank you. I need a little more caffeine. Anyone here for public comments? Anyone, anyone? Seeing none, is there anything online?
That's mature.
No one, okay. Seeing none, we will move on to mayoral announcements, proclamations, and appointments. Um, I do have a proclamation tonight. And this is one that we haven't, I haven't done before. Um, but I ran across it and it sounded like it would be something that would be good for us. And when I say us, I mean everyone. Um, so this is the National Volunteer Week, two thousand and twenty-five proclamation, to designate the week of April twentieth to twenty-six, twenty-five, not, two thousand and twenty-five as National Volunteer Week. Whereas volunteerism strengthens communities, improves social problems, and enhances the overall quality of life for all citizens. And whereas experience teaches us that government alone cannot solve all of our social problems and meet all of our opportunities. So we must build partnerships with businesses, faith-based organizations, nonprofit organizations, and community members. And whereas volunteering changes the lives of volunteers in a positive way, increasing self-confidence, self-esteem, and physical well-being, offering the chance to make new connections and providing opportunities to learn new skills and abilities. And whereas the city of Washburn recognizes that volunteering improves our quality of life and increases community participation and ownership. And volunteers are vital to our future as a desirable, caring, and productive city. And whereas National Volunteer Week is a more than fifty-year-old tradition enacted in nineteen seventy-four by President Richard Nixon that designates a special time to recognize and celebrate the contributions of volunteers. Then therefore, I am Mary Emo-Jeff, Mayor of the City of Washburn, hereby proclaiming the week of April twentieth to twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, to be hereby recognized as National Volunteer Week in the city of Washburn. You're here. Uh, Mayor? Yes. I attended the Washburn Beautification Foundation meeting today. And just a shout out, since you're talking about volunteers, I mean, that organization's been volunteering, been here longer than fifty years. And what they do for our community is pretty amazing. And they're looking for new members and they're doing a great job. Great. I just want a really good example of volunteers in our community. Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate that. Shout out. Um, and I am, I'm reaching out to some organizations to see, you know, what the process is for getting new volunteers. Um, so as I gain any of that information, I'll share it out on the mayor Facebook page and on the city's Facebook page. Um, so stay tuned and get ready to do some volunteering in the community, if you don't already. Because I know a lot of us do a lot of different things in the community. Uh, next, I have one announcement. And that is that we have, this is the last meeting for three of our elders. And so, um, I just want to thank them for their service. Um, this is the last meeting for Tom Nigus, Tracy Snyder, and John Hopkins. And, um, really, really appreciate the time that you've put in. You all had your own, uh, special, uh, you know, interests and, and things that you care about most, uh, but you're always, uh, you know, you've always been open to listening to other ideas and really appreciate your willingness to share your, your thoughts and your time and your service. Um, so I can't thank you enough for that. And I do have certificates for all of you, so. Um, I don't know if we're gonna do, uh, follow along with this.
Let's do one.
There's nothing.
Not in front of the bathroom.
No, no. Maybe we should just go by the flags. That's kind of a nice little.
That's good.
Tom, David, it's right here. Really appreciate your time and call. Tracy, it's been a pleasure. And John. Was this anything like any of you thought it would be?
I should have skipped before graduating.
I'll stand with those two. You gotta hold up here. Anybody wanna see anything on the, out the door? This is your chance.
No, I was just glad I got to work with Dana because a couple of things done.
Thanks.
I appreciate the help trying to beat that referendum.
Very good. All right. Thanks, everybody. And with that, I don't have any appointments today, so we will move on to Dave's Room Tax Commission annual report from the Room Tax Commission.
Great. So, uh, before you, uh, if I can put this on the screen if you would like.
That would be great. Thanks. Um, so just for the audience, um, we'll put it up on the screen. This is a report that is required to be given. We have a room tax ordinance. Um, so with, and a lodging, it's a six-and-a-half percent fee for anyone staying there. That money, ninety percent of it goes to the Room Tax Commission to be spent on tourism promotion and development. That's the statutory purpose of that room tax. Uh, the city keeps ten percent of it, uh, that we can use for whatever we see fit. Five percent of it goes to administration and five percent goes to, uh, Bayfield Street Beautification, uh, traditionally. And the Room Tax Commission then contr, we have, we have a zone together with the town of Bayview. They also have their room tax. And together, that commission, uh, takes that room tax money and contracts with the Washburn Chamber of Commerce to spend it on tourism promotion and development. So with that, I'll turn it over.
Okay, um, I wish I could give you a percentage of, uh, what was spent and what was received. Um, but before we come up with an actual percentage, I think what we should do, um, is dive into the, uh, summary of expenditures. Um, if you have any questions, I have some questions. I figured, uh, if you guys had any questions, that we would add that to the battery of, of questions that we would then send to the Chamber of Commerce, um, to, uh, kind of let's know what, what the breakdown is of the, of the expenditures. So the, the chamber received one hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars in room tax proceeds from the city of Washburn and the town of Bayview. Um, the Washburn proceeds were ninety-five thousand three sixteen, and the town of Bayview, um, was twenty-five thousand four seventy-one. And you'll see, uh, at the end of this breakdown, expenditures are a total of seventy-four thousand, uh, for purely in tax proceeds for direct tourism expenses. Um, but I'm sorry, that's not, that's not. Uh, these expenses amount to approximately sixty-two percent of the total tax proceeds received, um, according to the chamber. Uh, the balance, uh, in tax proceeds, forty-six thousand, uh, were expended over forty percent. Forty-seven percent of the chamber's twenty, twenty-four generals, which are the four expenses, which totaled ninety-seven thousand, six sixty-six, which is the total, um, at the end of our breakdown. So, um, I have some questions on the amounts that are spent on certain things. And, um, my concern is that they may, uh, may not be, uh, completely accurate. So I can just dive into my questions if you want, and then you'll see. Jump right in.
I'm unclear. Was this report, um, who, who put this report together?
The Chamber of Commerce provides us with the information.
Okay.
So in the past, we've only really received pie chart and, uh.
Right. I remember that from last year. This is new.
What they brought in and what they spent. And I asked them to provide a more detailed, um, breakdown of the expenses, uh, so that we can dive into those things. Um, I was hoping for a little more, um, detail on some of these expenses. That's why I have some questions, so.
So the chamber presents this to the Room Tax Commission?
They present this to the Room Tax Commission, or they provide it to the Room Tax Commission. They did not present it to us. So we didn't have a chance to ask them in person, and that's the Room Tax Commission, at the annual review. So.
And they're not here to come?
I, I don't.
Is Melissa online? I think Melissa was online, I thought.
So I'm going to the Room Tax Commission, and in the past, um, what I understand is that the chamber has been kept out of that meeting and just so that there wasn't a bunch of questions and, and so forth, and made it seem like they were getting hammered, I guess. So I, I don't know. But I would like to change that and get them there and so that we can keep moving forward in the future with, uh, working together and understanding how we spend this money. Don't necessarily, we, it's being spent a hundred percent correctly according to the Department of Labor's, uh, ordinance. So, um, but that's why we have these questions and we will provide them to the chamber, and maybe they can shed some light. Uh, I don't really want to throw shade on the chamber right now until we have answers, so. One of the questions I've always had, and maybe Mary, because she's very intuitive, um, a lot of this tourism stuff. Uh, one of the questions I've had is the visitor guide, uh, on the, on the print marketing, the first category, uh, is nine thousand, three sixty-one. And I know they throw all of that as an expenditure, but they also receive people paper ads to be in those publications. So I don't know if, if we can sufficiently include, and maybe they have.
My mistake.
Yeah, right. We don't know if they deduct what they've received out of that. I don't know. Um, out of the nine thousand, three sixty-one.
So just a question of, does that include, uh, is that the net versus the gross?
Right, yeah.
Right. Which makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they're only, you know, if they're receiving five thousand dollars in ads, then really only four thousand is one that should be an expenditure. It might be, but maybe, maybe that's something that, the nuance of that, um, can be figured in. The next one I have a big question on is the Superior Vista Light Tour at seven thousand, six ninety-five. Uh, again, uh, I've been advised from local, um, model owners that that is really the only event in, that the chamber has that actually puts heads in beds. A substantial amount of heads in beds. I'm not sure, I don't know where the seventy-seven hundred dollars in expenses comes from to pay that off.
I would imagine some might be for the, um, officers that they not gonna have stationed around, uh, the different intersections.
Right. And I'm sure there are expenses.
Sure.
I just.
Would like to know the details.
Hundred dollars.
Yep. Um, you know, there's some, some smaller ones there. The Turkey Trot had twenty-five hundred dollars in expenses. Now, my understanding of the Turkey Trot is that fundraised for the, uh, chamber, the, um,
Oh, okay.
Homecoming. That, that's what that was meant for. And the turnout on that, I, I don't know what the turnout on that is, uh, if they're, if they're spending twenty-five hundred and they're receiving twenty-five hundred in, in, uh, participants. I'm not, I'm not sure where that twenty-five hundred comes from. So I'd like to, I'd like to know about that. Um, the Mulpin is then going down to the next category with Experience Washburn, total Experience Washburn nearest, eleven thousand, nine fifty. I believe that is from a video, um, company that did a, some sort of summertime or wintertime video. But again, that's not really broken down. We can't really see what, what that is exactly for. And I'm not sure if I've ever seen that video on the chamber's Facebook page. That would be one thing I'd like them to do. Uh, I know that's not really, that's me personally. I'd like to see that video. They're, they're gonna pay for that video.
Yeah.
We should have it on the Facebook page so that all of the local people here see it. And I know that that's not really, they pay to have that stuff put out into the hinterlands beyond our viewing, right? So, um, at the time, that's something to say.
Yeah, I saw that video once. And I did have a conversation with her, a little while ago, and she was showing me where she's spending the money. And I said to her, if she's not here, so I don't, maybe you can get back to you, let me know. I asked her three areas, because this is where the money's at. You know this well as I do. I said Minneapolis, Rockford, Illinois, and Chicago. Bring some of that up here. That's where the money's at. She said that tourism increased during COVID.
Right.
According to what she had and what she was showing me, it's one of, the biggest one was from Duluth. So.
Yeah, so, yeah, this is two thousand and twenty-four expenditures, uh, with eleven thousand, nine fifty.
The details of that would be good to know. Do you see that that was for the production only, or that includes?
Yes.
Marketing of the video?
All whoever used to have a live from table down there. He's the one that did that video.
Oh, okay.
Or directed it.
Uh, another question I have is, uh, digital marketing, um, two thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars was spent on email and newsletters. I'm not sure where twenty-four hundred, how, how it costs twenty-four hundred dollars to send out some emails and newsletters.
You have salaries and different.
Right, yeah. Like if salaries included in that, then that's something, you know.
Right, the salary is a different line item, so, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Payroll.
Right, payroll expenses is in there. So I don't know, I don't know what that's from.
Well, it would be good to know, um, the number of subscribers to that. Any other details would be helpful. Is that just the newsletter that goes out to the community, or is that a different newsletter that goes out to people?
Yeah, I believe it's, it's a newsletter that sent out to all their subscribers, um, whoever's subscribed on the email chain.
Just all together at one?
Correct. But the last night, I mean, I would say it doesn't cost anything.
There, there are programs to do like constant contact that you have to pay for, but I don't know.
Right. Which would be great. I mean, if that's, if that's the case, then it'd be great to know. I, I'm assuming the twenty-seven hundred for the website is just maybe they redeveloped their website, which is fine. And then the Sherpa itinerary is at twenty-nine fifty. I, I didn't know what that was and I wasn't able to ask. Uh, but I've since learned it is the, uh, an amount that you would pay an influencer. Is that correct?
I think so, yeah. Do, they have different packages where you can pay like eight hundred dollars to have an influencer come and then write about your community and their experience.
And I, and I did see that online at some point, um, over the last year. Uh, moving down to road construction, uh, there was four thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars spent on signage that was down on Long. You know, we all have our opinions, uh, at least business owners have opinions on that signage. It wasn't very well done, but that, that's again, again, I, I don't doubt that they spent four thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars on signage. Uh, that's another, another big one. That probably, you know, that four thousand, three hundred and two won't be a, a line item on next year's budget, so. Moving on to equipment and software, uh, question I had was one thousand, thirty-nine in the copper lease. It says forty-nine percent of total cost for the machine. When you, if you guys haven't seen their bank statements, but we, when you add up the bank statement, the payments for that lease, uh, roughly come up to one thousand, thirty-nine, so I, I don't know. That, that might be a clerical error. I'd like to know that. Uh, the rest of those are all pretty much, um, you know, I think they're, they're acceptable. Postage and then supplies and office supplies, that's. The next one was, the big one was, uh, one thousand, five seventy for telephone and internet. I'm not sure if that's the total amount for the year that the chamber pays. Because we're only allowed to spend, I think, that's is what, fifty percent? Is that correct? Fifty percent of?
Of what?
Of the money received, um.
So, so the check there, question is different. Oh, that, that question is different between them. And that's why this is a little bit of a confusing situation here. About what the chamber can spend versus what the Room Tax Commission can spend. So Room Tax Commission has to spend all of its money on tourism promotion and tourism development. Contracts with the chamber to do that. Chamber then, to be a tourism entity, means either spend a hundred percent of its room tax revenues on tourism promotion and tourism development, or at least, if it doesn't, at least fifty-one percent of its total revenue on tourism promotion.
Oh, revenue.
So that's what that breakdown is, which we don't have the information to know whether that's even valid as a, not.
Because we don't have the revenue?
Correct.
Yeah.
We, we see from this that it's clear that not one hundred percent of the room tax revenue is being spent on tourism promotion and tourism development. We do not know what the total percentage of revenue is because we haven't been able to get that total revenue amount from the chamber.
Yeah. And just to be, um, candid, it has been a little bit of an issue of getting some of this information out of that. Basically, at, at one point, uh, there was an email that said it really wasn't any of our business, so. And we gotta, gotta handle that and rein that in, because it is our business. We're, you know, the Room Tax Commission, um, is responsible for spending taxpayer money. Uh, we've been tasked with that, and so we need to make sure it's done correctly. And so the last.
The rest is on the Room Tax Commission?
So there's two people from, um, Bayview, which is Bill Roden. He's the president of the Room Tax Commission.
The chair.
The, or the chair, sorry. And then, uh, Jay Pringle, uh, who's another Bayview resident, and then myself. And Jeff Mulbert from the Washburn area.
So two appointees from each, one appointee from each municipality and then a lodging member from each municipality, so four.
And, and we do know, um, this really doesn't have anything to do with the report, but the, the chamber board is supposed to have on its, the, the members of that board are supposed to consist of, of the four lodging members. Uh, and currently, I don't, I don't believe they have any. Um, it may be a challenge to get four, um, in the area, but, um, i- if they only receive money from this municipality, then they would only be required to have one. But because they receive money from two separate municipalities, they're required to have four. And they currently, I, I believe they say they have one. But I, I, I don't know if that person is actually a lodging member or not. They, they took their Airbnb and turned it into a long-term rental instead, so they're not really lodging. So, and the whole point of that is because lodging members are collecting the tax and their, the whole purpose behind it is to get more people, more heads in those beds. Uh, that's the purpose of the tax. And so if we're gonna ask them to, to be declarable, uh, motions of, of collecting this for us, then we should make sure that they have a voice at, at board, or the entity that is receiving the room.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Appreciate it. Yeah, does anybody have any questions today?
Well, we're, are we gonna compile a list today? Would that be what I do?
Well, and I don't know if it's today necessarily, but if anyone has questions either now or after the meeting, um, you know, we'll kind of gather the questions that they had together with any one else's questions and, you know, send that off to the chamber and ask her.
I would suggest, it, it makes sense that a person on the commission would meet with the head of the chamber and ask these questions, get the information, and be prepared when you come to the, to the council so that it would be more meaningful.
Right. I think it used to happen that way.
Did it?
For some, yeah. Oh, for some reason that changed.
Um, I don't know if the timing was bad and was it the meeting?
When I went to the last meeting, I was expecting the chamber to be there, uh, and so, um, and then from that meeting till today, um. Mary and I were gonna put together some questions for them, but then we kind of decided, maybe rather than us come up with a bunch of questions and send those questions off and get answers from them. And then come here and if you guys have more questions, that we just compile a list of questions and and send it off to them at one time.
Well, I think it would be good to get some sort of list of income from them so we can see if we're even compiling with a fifty one percent. And and it would clear up so many questions if we had that, you know, cross reference from a lot of these, like, all your questions are great and it's fine and stuff.
I've been trying for, since I came here.
No, like I said, I'm interested in those three areas, I know the age group that she's looking at, and.
For for target market or?
Yes, and I, that that should be a question on how much that's gonna cost, if it's doable for her to do those three areas. Because that would increase tourism, they have more money.
Sure, and I don't know that we need to get into details of the marketing plan necessarily, but, you know, what is the money being spent on, is it?
Right, how how much is this gonna cost, those those three areas?
It, and to add to that, I mean, I just think in general, a better working relationship with the chamber in terms of just. I I feel like the only time we ever hear from the chamber is like when we get a request for something, you know, versus just more working together, more like maybe a like. Presentation on some of these things, so that we can talk to our business and our constituents about like what things we're going to need to get watch, more people to watch her. And and I just think that'd be more efficient than all of the council members trying to go down and talk to her and talk to the chamber and stuff, so. I mean, I I guess I would like to see that, I don't know how that can happen, but that could clarify a lot of stuff, right? Let's work it together more.
Well, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That has to happen, the chamber and city gotta work together.
Well, so the the city of Washburn is currently in a an agreement until December twenty twenty six. And so January twenty seven is when we could then choose to either give them the money to do this. We don't have to contract with the Washburn chamber, um, we could choose to contract with another chamber or a tourism area around the area. And it's just always been, before I had a chance to get on the commission, the agreement was signed.
Let me tell you, when was this, when was the first agreement signed?
It's two years, so it's twenty, no, three years, it's a three year agreement, I believe, or.
I think it's two years.
Two years, yeah, it was twenty.
I think it was, yeah, it was right when the referendum was going for the years, there was a lot going on, so we figured that council didn't want to deal with the complexities. Of that sort of an agreement at that time, and Dave was coming on as a new member, so we thought, let's just see how this goes. And then, well, we had to decide by June of twenty six, um, whether we want to stay in the current agreement with the town of Bayview in the room tax commission. And if we don't, and we give them notice that we don't want to stay in the commission, what that means is at the end of twenty six, that agreement goes away. And then we would have to have a new agreement just between us and the chamber for our portion of the room tax. And then that way we would just write a completely new agreement, uh, check.
There are some collection, uh, the town of Bayview did bring up some, uh, collection issues where it, uh, like, for example, when when Airbnb, they they get. The the revenue from the town of Bayview may be a little skewed because, um, when Airbnb sends out, um, their money. The the taxes they have collected from someone renting an Airbnb, they get sent to a zip code, not an actual municipality. So some of the Airbnb taxes that may have been collected in the town of Bayview, um, may have come to Washburn, right? So there's, I know the town of Bayfield also struggles with this issue with the town of Bayfield and the, because they're in the same zip code, so they have the.
And the town of Russell.
Right, yeah, so they have, uh, the Airbnb owners create a a report that they send in so that clerks in each municipality can. Decipher how much was sent from to the Airbnb, and I don't know how that's broken down with Tammy here and whether or not.
It costs us a lot of extra work.
Right, and and do we require the Airbnbs in Washburn to file a tax, a report, how much they've collected?
I don't believe we do because the third party marketplace is sending in that money, so technically they don't have to unless we made it.
I'm pretty sure if it is stated that they should, or I don't think in practice that is, since the marketplace Airbnb has taken over directly. Collecting and remitting these taxes to the state, the city has not required Airbnb owners to provide those individual, uh, reports to the city. Because money's still coming in, used to be the city's responsibility to track it, it's not anymore.
From the market.
Correct, and to make sure it got paid, uh, but now, yes, those types of reports are what's necessary to divvy up the room tax proceeds between town Bayview and city Washburn because they're both in the same zip code.
Yeah, you know how the city of Bayfield and the town?
Yeah, so the city of Bayfield, town of Bayfield do it where they require in order to renew your room tax permit or license for the next year. You have to have submitted your quarterly room tax statements to the city or town treasurer. Those don't have really, well, they serve two purposes, one, they serve a purpose to track the percentage of. Or the amount of revenue received from room tax from both the city and the town. And two, on those forms, they also ask you how many of your bookings were through a marketplace provider such as Airbnb. They also have another provision to ask, uh, how many were direct bookings, uh, whether you, uh, other people staying there, anything else. Because those, uh, the rental owner is supposed to pay directly to the municipality. Under our, under the requirements of the statutes, they're still supposed to do that, but I know that we've had had trouble tracking and enforcing those in the past. Um, so where the city of Bayfield, town of Bayfield do it is, if you haven't provided your quarterly reports, then you can't get your room tax permit for the next year. Or not your room tax, your short term rental permit for the next year. Um, so then when it comes in, the municipalities, it'll show, whatever, for city of Bayfield, they maybe got. In these room tax reports, it shows that maybe ninety percent of the income that was paid to marketplace providers was from rentals in the city of Bayfield. Ten percent was from rentals in the town of Bayfield. And the cities then work together to apportion, or the room, uh, room tax commission works together to determine how much of that goes to each other. I think that, in my understanding, since they've been requiring these and and they have had good compliance with getting these quarterly room tax reports. Both municipalities have been happy with how those have been voluntarily reported by the rental owners, so it's worked well in that situation. It it's, I don't know that it's ever been exactly on where the, um, owners' reports match dollar for dollar. The amount that's coming in from Airbnb or from a third party, party marketplace, but it's been close enough and so that they're happy with the percentages that go to the municipality. And I know we've, I've been working with and had worked with, when this issue first came up, um, worked with Tammy and also worked with town of Bayview. To get these, uh, quarterly reports sent out, or maybe not sent out, but have a draft of them ready. Um, so I think everything's in place to move forward with that, but that's really the only way to do it, is this voluntary reporting.
So is that something the council has to approve this be done, or is that something the city can just add to their requirements, or are we doing?
The city can add that, I believe it's already in in the requirements that currently exist, but I can follow up on that and make sure. Um, but no, there wouldn't be anything that council is required to do in addition, as of now, that's that's my understanding. If something needs to be done, a specific approval needs to be done, I can give that update and bring it back next month, but I don't think there's anything specific that needs happening.
So conversation can happen between the mayor and and the administrator and.
Yes, yep, yes, and I think that, yeah, for everyone's knowledge, I think that first came up, yeah, and. It was when we were doing a reconstruction project, there's a referendum happening, Scott was giving his notice to leave, and a lot of things were hitting the fan all at the same time. And we're still getting the money, so these voluntary reports kind of, uh, fell by the wayside. So, yes, bring that back, we can, we can push that.
Okay, any other questions? Melissa is on, oh, okay, she just got on, so, but I I I do think compiling the questions and sending them to Melissa and working together is the next move, so, very good. Okay, with that, we will move on to the treasurer's report, and this is, I think, just an informational piece in tab one of the packet. This is something that we need to just get, um, monthly in our mailboxes, I think, um, and so it's, uh, in the packet just for informational purposes. I don't think there's anything, um, that needs to be decided or said about it necessarily, just FYI, this is where we are at this time in all of our accounts. The next item is, uh, requests to close Central Avenue for upcoming schedule of events and related items. Farmers Market, Wednesdays two to seven, June fourth to October fifteenth, from Bayfield Street north to Third Street and. Food Truck Night and Music in the Park, Monday, ten AM to nine PM, June second to September twenty ninth. And that's Bayfield Street north to Third Street, uh, north to Third Street, um, what, Avenue? Is that the one?
It's close, Central Avenue.
Central Avenue, okay, thank you. Does anyone care to make a motion on this to get us?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve this, I'll second that motion.
Motion by Tom, second by Jared to approve.
Are you approving?
Is that both?
These are both tabs? Yeah, yeah, these are two tabs.
Together, okay.
What are we?
Oh, they're just two tabs, got it.
They're two tabs, but I was motioning to approve all at the same time.
Okay, does anyone have any questions, Jen? Um, uh, Melissa, you're on, right, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thanks, um, I guess I have a couple of questions, the first one is, so we're moving it to Mondays. We're gonna have music in the park and the food truck on the same night, right?
Yes.
Um, it, but has it been on Wednesdays before?
It has.
Um, my question is, moving it to Mondays and the food truck, and I I get that a lot of our, um, businesses are not open on Mondays for food. And so the food truck on Mondays makes sense. My only concern, and I just wondered if it's something you guys thought about or talked to businesses like over by Wickdale. I know that going that side of town every other Wednesday was beneficial because a lot of people would go and get their food at Lyle's and Patsy's and, you know, and and kind of. I guess peruse that side of town, um, and now having all of Legion Park kind of just changes that dynamic a little bit. And I just thought it was kind of a boost to those businesses, and I just wondered if you could address that thought or concern of mine.
Yes, I can, so originally when we decided to do them on Wednesdays, it was only Wednesday simply because Wednesday and Washburn both have W's. So we did Washburn Wednesday, it wasn't just a random date that we chose. The problem that we were trying to solve at that time was COVID and the businesses being only open for takeout. So to encourage people to come for takeout at that time during COVID, we moved, we did the music in the parks at both sites. We have a new problem, now that COVID is gone, the businesses are capable and have plenty of business, um, minus last year. Um, so the new issue that we're working on is Mondays, the amount of complaints that we get from not only locals but also from, uh, tourists. That there is nothing open on Mondays and why are they even staying here if there's nothing to eat is the current issue that we're trying to solve. So that's why we decided to do the food truck Mondays on Mondays and then move the music to that so that we could move both at the same time.
Okay, thank you for addressing that.
No problem.
Uh, I was just wondering with the food truck closing all the way up to Third Avenue, I know the neighbor's been notified when we do that for the, um, Farmer's Market. But have they been notified that we're closing all the way up to Third Street on Mondays?
I guarantee that there will be no food trucks on that street because we're limiting the number of food trucks to two to three at a time. So they will only be in that first section, I just like to put that on there for safe maneuvering in case something comes up.
Sure. Uh, I also had another question about the temporary stage at Legion Park.
Sure.
I just have a few safety concerns, I guess, like who's liable for the stage if the stage gets damaged, also. Kids are on there jumping around, getting hurt, is the city liable, who's stage, what's the stage look like, and is there gonna be lawn damage if it's a long term, summer long stage?
So currently we're working with the high school tech department to create the stage, the reason we're having a stage this year is the band that we have booked for homecoming, uh, requires a stage or they won't come. So we needed a stage that we could build, that we could have for them, it just was nice that we would be able to also use it for music in the parks. Um, the musicians don't like being on the ground with their equipment, especially drummers, things like that. So that's why we decided to try to go with a a semi temporary, uh, or a semi permanent stage at this point. Um, the reason it's semi permanent also is because we want to be able to move it to where it needs to be for the band during homecoming. The chamber is taking on the, uh, costs of that, and we are, will be giving it to the city. Um, it is, the specs meet what the band required, um, and obviously all the safety concerns and things like that has been taken into account with it. Um, we have insurance that we have to provide to the city for our event, so it's most likely that it was kind of a split liability. Um, you know, no matter what, you put anything out there, people are gonna climb on it, walk on it, possibly get hurt. Um, it's it's just, it is the nature of putting anything in a park, um, we could say the same for benches and, you know, anything else, so, um. At this point, normally on a application for an event like this, there is, it doesn't come to the city council at all. It literally just says that a temporary stage will be placed, um, but we wanted to make sure we've been working with the Public Works, we've been working with Tony and we've been working with Randy. Um, on giving them all the dimensions, all the information and working on how to make this good for everybody. I hope that answers your question.
Thanks, Melissa, this is Mary, I'm just wondering, um, I I missed the part, whether it just stays there all summer or whether it gets taken apart or put away in between? Or if it's just there for the summer?
So it'll be there for music in the parks during the summer, for homecoming that day, Public Works will move it to the site that it needs to be moved to, which is why it's, um, I guess collapsible for lack of a better term. At least they don't want people to think it's gonna collapse, um, and then it will be moved back for the remainder of the summer events. Um, which would only be the month of August, so for more events. Um, at that time, we can discuss if it it becomes permanent or if it needs to be packed up in store. If it needs to be packed up in store, we are in discussions with somebody about that. If it becomes permanent, I know Jerry would like to have a slab put down so that, um, maintaining the grass. If it becomes permanent, I know Jerry would like to have a slab put down so that maintaining the grass and things like that can be easier for them. But I also understand that that will probably have to go to the Parks Committee and a lot of different other things. So that would be up to the city. If they want it to become more permanent, we would give it to the city and allow them to do what they need to do with it.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Maybe we'll use the word cordial.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Any other questions? See, none. There is a motion and a second, and I will ask all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for all your work on this, Melissa.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is an item that was previously postponed to consider resolution number 2025-02, vacating the unopened area of South Fifth Avenue West and West Wisconsin Street. Terry Dolan, petitioner. It's tab four of your packet. I know Terry had a conflict with the meeting date tonight and is not available, but her husband, I believe, is online.
Patrick and Julie Phillips is on as well.
Great. So we have two people online if there are questions. And I guess we have some additional information even from the last time this item came forward. I would just like to say, you know, that this family has been planning to build on this parcel for decades. Has cooperated in good faith with the city on Wisconsin Street, utilizing a portion of their property and with placement of culverts on their property. And this is a piece of land that will likely never be used for anything but a connector, pedestrian, or bike trail, which can still happen. And with that, hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review the additional information that was provided both by the Dolans and I believe there was another follow-up letter or two. The Chabons and the Ted, the Rood, and the Jalen. And then all the information that we've had previously. And I was not here for the last meeting, so I, I forgot. I should have watched the discussion to see where that went. Jen, do you have any insight to provide from the last meeting on this discussion?
You know, we basically talked about any new information, which I don't think was very much except the fact that there was some laterals that we weren't aware of that were placed. And then just some discussion and then really, we postponed it simply due to the public because felt like it came back up pretty quickly. And I think didn't give sufficient time for people who originally had written letters and come and spoke to be able to attend the meeting if they continue to have concerns. And so the motion to postpone was, I believe, driven mostly on just giving the public more time of the folks. And then at that time, Randy, you said that you were going to notify the neighbors and the different folks who had originally signed the, I don't know what it was. We had the petition or whatever, to, to make sure that they were aware that this was back on the agenda. Because it didn't feel like it's a very common thing for us to bring back something on the agenda that was already decided upon. Okay, sounds good.
I'm on the motion to.
This is Jess.
Uh, yeah, a motion would be great.
Yep. I'll second.
I'm going to make the motion to approve the resolution to vacate South Fifth Avenue West and West Wisconsin.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Dave, second by Tom to approve the resolution. Anyone have questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Okay, I saw Tracy first and then Tom. Go ahead, Tracy.
For the people here who are neighbors attending, if someone could give just kind of an overview of the specifics of, you know, like, the city will vacate X amount of feet, this will be the remaining, the city will assume whatever about the drainage. So that it's clear about what's really going to happen, how it's going to look. Because I think that's important to, to people understand, sure, what's going on. Is that something, do you want to say anything, Randy, about the overall?
Well, Jerry, Jerry, you're still in the background, correct?
He's back there.
I think it's time for you to approach the podium, the dais, the microphone, whatever you want to call it. But, you know, Jerry's obviously had his plug this, so Jerry, if you'd come up and be ready to speak to this. But my understanding, and again, I went down there again just this morning, and there has been some cutting down there. You know, they're looking at, you know, permanent brushes in that whatever way. And, you know, it's pretty clearly marked, they've had somebody out there marking it, you know, a land surveyor.
Who's they?
I would say the Dolans. And.
It was probably their property, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, actually, that's a very good point, too, because there was a stake pounded into the ground. And it says, like, PL, like, for property line, like, four foot, you know, in this direction. And they didn't put it by the end of the trail area. They put it right next to, signaling that it's over here is where the real line is, where the property boundary, as opposed to where the trail is lined up. So as you were suggesting, there's some historical overlap there. You've got big old pipes down there, Jerry. Tell me if I'm wrong. I'm not sure what the size of those concrete bed boys are, but you have some big old pipes on it. But very little, comparatively, water running through that from what I saw, except for the one area that there's a good-sized pipe that has some water in it. But there's other water infrastructure that even now is seeing not much. So I can imagine different scenarios, which is why I wanted you to talk to this, because there's a lot of up and there's a lot of down in that area, too. So why don't you go for it?
And Jared, you could address the property lines, because I went down there this morning and I don't read things as well as some people. And I was a little confused. So if you could enlighten us.
Okay, well, I'll address the storm, storm situation there. So there's, there's two storm pipes that feed Desert Bean. Both storm pipes literally are just basically underneath the road. There's watershed that comes from the north that's up all the way that feeds into a pipe. And then there's an upper pipe that services the two catch basins that are on Wisconsin and Salt. Those are the only pipes that really direct water across the property there. I basically think what it is is that Ravine extended up into those lots. When they put the road in, they put pipes in, they're not connected to anything as far as up on Highway 13. It's just basically servicing that block area and the drainage from there, their road through it. So there is not an abundance amount of water that transverses through that ravine down into the connecting storm source system.
But those are, they remain there.
Yeah, so they will, they're there. Whether they remain or not will be determined. Again, they're just servicing between Omaha, Washington, Bethel, and Salt.
Okay. Do you have a question for Jerry?
I just think, just to clear it up, maybe, like what Jen was asking, what we get, or maybe what you were asking, yes. So if we pass this, we'll get easement to be able to work on those pipes and the title to the street.
Not necessary. So, so this is when the question has come up. So the city has no written easement or declaration of interest in either Wisconsin Street or these utilities that run under this property. However, that includes the stormwater pipes there. However, they've been there, all of them, in excess of 20 years. They're well-established by the survey maps that have laid them out. So the city has a ownership interest in these, in the street and in the drainage ditch, or the drainage pipes that are there as utilities. If, so to answer the question there, the city cannot be forced to stop using these. If landowners were to try to force the city to stop using them because there's no reported interest in them. My opinion is the city would very clearly easily have an established right of prescribed easement to continue using this. Because they've been used in excess of 20 years for a public purpose and that that's been continuous there. So that question of whether the city, if we don't pass this, would have to move any of these, my opinion is no. Now, I hope, maybe we can get an answer to this if the applicants are available. And they would agree to condition this resolution to vacate their roadway on granting the necessary express easements to the city for the roadway and for these drainage ditches. That would eliminate a lot of this confusion and in the event that they did try and stop the city from using them, it would eliminate court costs and fees and attorney fees and things like that. So the answer to that question isn't an absolute yes or no. If we vacate this, the city will have an express right. But it could be, if the applicants agree, the city can condition this vacating on granting an express easement or conveying the roadway to the city of these.
That was one of my concerns in reading all this, is that I think we, we're going to vacate and we need to clean up a lot of this.
Absolutely.
Stuff that's going on with land and land used by the city, clean up the messiness of it. So that was my concern. Okay, now I'm going to go back to, Jared, do you have anything else you want to add on the overall picture and background of the scenario?
Unfortunately, I've not had a check of the property lines, you know, as they're addressed. We don't know roughly, you know, where they're at. It would be interesting to see what it actually looks like now that the state built. Just drove down there and I miss the orange partners. But, yeah, I mean, as far as I, you know, as my input was, the storm source system there, kind of give you the insight on that.
And the other thing I'll mention is I think the owners are going to build on the property no matter what. It's just a matter of whether it's a one-story or a two-story home. And so I would imagine the neighbors would rather have a one-story than a two-story, but that's just an assumption, I guess. And then Tom, you had something?
Yeah. So, okay, if we do this vacate and then they'll give the city legal easement on Wisconsin Street because anyone feeding your property is in that street?
If we make that a condition. All right.
Yes. It's not, that's not guaranteed, that's not agreed to. And that's why maybe Terry or, did I hear Terry's husband or a family member was on that could comment on that or agreement for that? That would be helpful.
Patrick, are you open to doing an express easement to the city on the culverts and the, and the road in exchange for the vacation?
The answer is I'm sure we can work something out. Meaning, let's just have, you know, your attorney and whoever we would need to represent us sit down as soon as, you know, the, the motion already crafted tonight. It says, based on a mutually agreeable easement that the city needs to maintain its street and maintain its sewer pipes, you know, whatever you needed to say. And if that's passed, then I can get to work on it and it should say something to the effect that is why it's mutually agreeable. I'm sure we can work it out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Do we need to amend the motion asking for that language then?
Yeah, I will amend my motion to have the city attorney draft up the necessary easements and/or.
Language.
Language to vacate that exceptionally.
No, okay. I saw Jen and then Jared. Can then wait before you, Jared first, okay. Jared and then Jen after next.
So just to clarify here on my amended motion, the resolution is to approve the vacation with the condition that the city attorney reach a mutually acceptable agreement to resolve the easement issues with Wisconsin Street and the drainage ditches on the applicant's property.
Okay, Jared.
All right. Go back to what Tracy said. I mean, I've just heard a lot of concerns, there's a lot of different concerns about this project. The biggest ones, I think, if we could just address here, make sure they're not going to be an issue. And I think they're most important to the city as a whole. I've heard a lot of things about the easement going all the way down in the middle of ATB Trail. There's concern about that.
And that's not correct.
Okay. So it will not be including any part of the ATB Trail.
Correct. That would be, that would, there's no movement on that side of the property line.
Copy that. That's awesome. I love that trail, I use it all the time. And then a space for a future cut-through trail, which it seems has been addressed a number of times. There will still be space.
Thirty-three feet.
Thirty-three feet, even this, I know that, yeah, this most recent one we got has a really nice layout.
What was it?
Setbacks and things. So those are just some concerns I wanted to, you know, to address here, to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, there was quite a bit of confusion, I think, with that, so thank you for clarifying. Anyone, oh, yeah, then Jen.
Yeah, mine's to go along with what Jared was just talking about. I, I think I can, can I do a motion on topic motion? Like, I want a motion to open the floor for public comment on this topic. Can I do that?
Yes, the motion to open the floor is allowed during discussion on a pending motion.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to open the floor for discussion because we say things like, oh, you know, the adjacent landowners would prefer a one-story versus a second story. So I would just like to open the floor and give some time for people who came here tonight to.
Oh, sure. Okay, so we have a motion by Jen, second by Tracy, to open the floor, the public board discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone here who would like to make their opinions known on this topic at this time?
Got a question.
And if you don't mind just stepping up to the microphone. And that's what people online can hear.
And I apologize if I don't have the right information. Just listening, if we're hoping to get this mutually agreed upon, why wouldn't we get that agreement and then take a vote on it? In other words, what if we say we accept it and we can't come up with something that's mutually agreeable?
Oh, then it wouldn't happen.
And then it's, so there is a place for it to stop before somebody's building or something.
Yeah. Yep, you're welcome. Anyone else?
So I guess I would like some clarification when I was.
Why don't you pull in that down alongside me?
I guess I'm shorter.
Or tilt it, there you go.
So when I was reading through the documents, it appeared that the two-story building would actually be on the west side of the property. Is that correct? Instead of on the vacay.
No, not, not the original building. So the Dolans want to build their home on this eastern site. They, they're hoping that in the future, their kids will build on the middle property. So that's a separate home that will go there. So there will be, there will be three homes in a row there. That's where the utilities are in already. They planned ahead for this, you know, decades ago to put two additional homes on their property. Two additional homes, there's one there. There's one there already, that's a relative.
Three homes, that's like, well, I've heard one, I've heard two, three?
No, no, there's one there already. Correct. And so there's the west side of the ravine and then the east side of the ravine. So the Dolans are planning on building on the east side of the ravine no matter what at this time.
But that's a one-story home.
They would like to build a one-story home. They need this additional room for setbacks in order to make it a one-story home. And if we don't vacate that thirty-three feet, then they would most likely have to build up instead of out. You're welcome. Anyone else? I don't know, public.
Yeah, it was a good question for you, too. I understood that they were going to build a one-story if we, only if we did the easement. I understood that they were going to build a one-story if we, only if we did the easement, you know, then a two-story if we didn't.
Correct.
But now they're going to still build the two-story and the other one in the future.
Well, I don't know what they're going to build on the other one. That's just, yeah.
And we also can't make anybody, to be clear, build one or two-story. They can still, if we do this, they can build a two-story. We just do it.
It's not, yeah, it's not a contingency on anything. Well, in the future, owner could always put on another.
And sell it and do whatever he wants, right? I mean, it's not, we can't, we can say the one-story or two-story, but there's no contingency on anything.
But in the near future, that's the most likely, that's the scenario.
Plan.
Okay, anyone else?
Seeing no more.
Can I?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I don't even like to bring this up, Patrick.
Yes.
Patrick, um, this is Randy, the city administrator, and I'm the new guy and I, I know which way south is on the map because I actually have a map showing me this. So just out of curiosity, because I went out and looked at that and I know that, uh, Jerry had been out there before, but I don't think it was since the time that I saw this property stapled this, you know, wooden lap that was out there with the red tape, et cetera. Jerry, you know what I'm talking about. And it says PL four, which to me, and then, you know, one dash, which is for a foot as opposed to two, which is for inches, so four foot, and then, and an arrow. So, so as I look at the map, familiar packet in tab four, um, it says vacilled on it, it's on the right-hand side as you're opening your packet. I would just like to make sure before we walk away from the meeting for yet another month, if this is meant to be done, that
Let me just put that out on my
That that, um, it's in tab four, yeah, but these have
Oh.
Did we, yeah, you've got it.
Yep.
So that we make sure for the city's perspective, if this is what is being decided upon and approved by council, that the city has adequate access to its currently existing trail, and again, I'm the new guy, okay, three months-ish, but which may or may not be wholly on its own property or maybe slightly on your property. Does that sound like something your side of the equation, your family would be willing to also make as a good paid contingency? We're just trying to all get it together if this is going to happen. But I saw that stake out there and I'm nervous about walking away from this meeting for yet another month, that's the case, only to be held up by, oh, their property does go to four feet inside the trail.
So is this the trail right here?
I believe so, and we're looking at a essentially a black and white photo, and I don't know how good the marking is on this one, you know, it's a black marker that went on here that's done pretty well, but I saw the stake in the ground today.
But it was four feet and the right-of-way, the, the railroad right-of-way was gotta be...
And I can answer this.
Okay, over to Matt.
Yes, uh, so I can answer this question, but the, the area that's being vacated, the description of, um, Fifth Avenue West running south runs and terminates at the abandoned Railroad right-of-way there, which is the city's property line on that ATB Trail.
Perfect.
And the petition is only seeking for abandonment between Wisconsin Street and the abandoned Railroad right-of-way. So that's what they say, it's only to the edge of that. The maps, the lines on the maps, I will tell you, appear to be overlapping somewhat, but if you actually look, it's not in here, I have it closer, at the certified survey map, it shows that that property line is north of ATB Trail.
Okay.
Perfect.
And then to go with that, is like the access coming down from Fifth Avenue West? Like if you look on, again, the same map, and the, I think it's the Chaplin property next door, like to access, if you ever wanted to go through, according to this map, it looks like it's almost going on their property and it's kind of have to go over to, to like kind of link down?
No, there would be no requirement to cross any other property, private property to continue that
Okay.
connection down. This, that picture you're looking at is not in, like, an exact depiction of where this goes.
And it's really hard to tell when you're out there too, because, anyway.
There's a lot of
So essentially, the, the, if you're walking south down the immediate middle of Fifth Avenue West, as it's going south, after this vacation is granted, you can continue to walk that line straight towards the ATB Trail and that would be the new property line. Everything to your left would still be public access, everything to your right would be the Dolan's property. So that shows you got, you have a half of the width of Fifth Avenue West. It's on the east side, it will continue to be public access, running down there.
That it's not on any private property?
Correct. So in this picture where those cars are parked, uh, of the Chaplin's property, those are parked on the public right-of-way. So that is continuing to be, it looks like it's private property there, but it's, it's not. That's where the continued public access is, that goes on.
Ah, okay. In the future, when we make decisions and we're having these kind of conversations, we've had three of them on this property, we need to have better maps and better information to make decisions. Bottom line, it's very difficult. I've been to that site three times. Um, I will state too, my last thing I'm going to state is the letter that we received, um, on April 10 states things like, I'd like to note that we're not asking, of course, the agreement made with my family and the city years ago, nor am I asking to take back the land, the city is using without written off, you know, authority permission. So, you know, just stating like, she's not asking us to like honor anything that was like the handshake deals that were done in the past. But in the end, you know, it states like, to me adding thirty-three feet to my lot, which is less than one-half of what the city is using from Wisconsin Street, seems reasonable. So it's counter, the letter is counterintuitive to me. It first says, oh, I'm not asking you to honor all these things. However, in the end, it seems like to give us thirty-three feet would be due, due justice, right? Um, I've been pretty solid my entire career on city council about public land and how valuable it is. And like what the city gets for giving up, this is like Lake Shore, like Lakeview land, it's adjacent to a ATB. I think there's other choices for building here. So I'm still, um, leaning towards not being supportive of the, the agreement to continue to use this piece of land, just simply because of its value and where it's at and, but I'm just stating that I've been pretty solid on it. I mean, I also don't give up alleyways and all sorts of things because I feel like we don't know what our future holds and I just know how valuable public land is, particularly in this area. So, um, that's all I have to state. So again, thanks for all the information, but in the future, it would be really good to have solid maps and what Randy pointed out in one of our agenda topics today, all the things that we should go through before we do land, kind of things like this, about what's the benefit? Like, I really liked Randy's letter on the future packet, just having all that stuff lined out, it would save us all a lot of time and energy. So, and then it would be also very clear to people who have these conditional whatever, like everyone has to go through to do this too. It's like money and time for this, um, you know, for this public to, to go through all this and just think we can be, do a better job upfront, lining all that stuff out.
And so we have another vacation request, I heard, Jen.
Oh, I'm fully aware, but, I mean, it's just the amount of energy and time. I think, I really like Randy, I like your memo on that, and I, I would like to see that in the future. So, your name is?
Yeah, I would agree with Jen, if this was, um, always public land, it's always been built land, but we also took private land at some point. And there is a whole list of those things in the city and I think it's our, you know, I think we need to make some of these things right for people that have always assumed that, you know, a lot of times when you own land, you don't really know where the line is and you're trusting your own government to do things, um, according to what they're supposed to do. And we don't always, we haven't always done that here. And so I think it's, I think it's only right that we allow them to build the home that they desire on the land that they've always dreamt of putting that home. And I, I don't believe this is that big of an issue with giving up some public land to make that happen since we robbed them of some of their own.
Well, and I, I just wanted to add to that, and we will, well, I don't believe that this could ever be used for a road and that, and the most likely scenario is a connector trail, which we can still do.
Or a bridge.
Did someone, I know Jen, you wanted to go, but I thought I saw someone else's scan.
Kind of speaking back to Jen, I've searched my soul on this, giving up the public land and how it's attached to the other. It's been a really hard decision. I, I, I get it, but I think, yeah.
Okay, Jen and then Tracy. And I'll agree with you that each circumstance has values to look at in its own particular interest, like, and that's why I like Andy, or Candy.
Candy next.
And, and just one last point, when, you know, cases like the land, the property that they've always dreamt of building on, I, I totally get that, but also that people built adjacent to that and the Chaplins built, you know, bought a house, also knowing that they had a large piece of land, thirty, you know, sixty-six feet between them and their neighbors, and now we're taking half of that away. So you can, you can say that, but I also think that it goes always, right? And so we have people that live in that area and we all have their letters in our packet. And I agree that one story is better, I mean, there's, there's like, there's some trade-offs here, right? But I also just want to point out that, yeah, I agree that they deserve to build their, their property that they want to build on, the home they do, but there's also adjacent landowners that, that built and bought because of a circumstance that was there that we're changing.
But it's not affecting their property in any way.
No.
And you can't say that because I talked to one of the landowners and he might actually, that comes up and it's in his way, that he might actually sell his home. And which is, it is probably, and I'm not saying it's affecting their property, but you can't say how it affects their, why they built or their visual or their scenic integrity of their home. So, I mean, I think looking at the whole picture, each one's going to be different, everybody has their values, um, but, I mean, I think it goes always because I will stop. Okay, Tracy, did you want to say?
Jen, Jen, she, she summed up some of what I wanted to say, so I don't think it is.
Okay.
It's a complex vacation, I mean, and, and I think having the right information right off the front, what are we looking at, how is this, you know, that we need to do that. So anyway, we can move on.
Okay, so, uh, did we have a
No, you need to do that.
Jared had something.
Jared, the floor is still open.
So I'll just bring up a good point. Um, you brought it up with all the information and going over and over and over. I will say that it's very easy for this council to do. In the process of vacating or anything like this, that you set a clause into a prior part of the vacating of any land or adjacent properties that, you know, you may or may not have the survey. Has to be completed and then reviewed by Department of Public Works to verify everything and it would take a lot of this out of it. I mean, I've been sent out there twelve times and I got to guess where the property lines are and kind of try and guess where everything's at and try to validate for you, but if that was a condition in the, of, of asking, had something validated?
Vacated.
Vacated, then?
Yep.
If you had that done prior to the paperwork, then it makes it a lot easier for everybody to go off, take a look at it, see what they're asking for and, uh, would, would cut a lot of the time for us.
Good point, thank you. Thanks, Jerry, I appreciate it. All right, motion to close the floor?
Some
Second. All right, motion by Dave, second by Jen to close.
Oh, I have a quick comment. Um, it's a complex situation, it's, it sounds like things haven't been handled very well, the maps weren't great, but basically the city took some of this person's property, what was it, sixty-nine years ago? And they're asking, you're willing to clean up the fact that the city did that that long ago and you're asking for this vacation and, and in exchange, it sounds like there's a strong possibility of an agreement and I think it's, it's ridiculous that it's taken this long for the city not to just say yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to close public comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Um, do we need people who may overcome it during that to say who they are? No. All right, then we have a motion and a second. I'm not going to try to repeat it, but I think we have it down, correct, to approve
We will in a minute.
With the contingency, yeah, Matt says, with the contingency to come to a mutually agreed upon agreement for everybody to have their own property and all that. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Close. Motion passes, thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on, our next item is to consider amending, uh, the city sponsored loan for lateral repayment schedule term from five to ten years for loans exceeding ten thousand dollars. Uh, this came to me, this one situation came to me where the person had gotten an estimate of four thousand, like forty-five hundred dollars for their lateral replacement. And because it ended up being this wonky situation where the connection was like in the rear of the building and then it split between two properties, it ended up being fourteen thousand dollars instead of forty-five hundred dollars. And it's just a cost that is not something that you can pay in five years, that's on top of, you know, some other things that are going on. You know, he's trying to start a new business and, um, uh, I said, I don't know what I can do, but let me think about it. And so this was the solution that I came up with, I talked to staff about it, it seemed to be a reasonable ask, especially because it's the only one that's over ten thousand dollars. I came up with the ten thousand dollars just like, you know, out of that, like, hey, what if anything over ten thousand? And then it turns out that's the only one that's over ten thousand dollars. So, um, if anyone was here to make a motion on that?
Well, second.
Motion to approve, uh, second by Tom. Any other questions on this?
So on this one, this was a request that came and this, the terms of the lateral loan program are actually in an ordinance. So this will have to come back to approve this amended ordinance with that language next meeting, we're proud to see. And I honestly, when I saw this, I couldn't remember exactly why we had this in an ordinance instead of just in policy language. And since the gentleman came out, I found it because it isn't expected that these lateral replacements are required due to lead service laterals. But if they are, and the city offers these loan programs to repay them, then those loan programs replace a lead sewer lateral or lead water lateral is required to be in ordinance. So that's why when this first came out, Scott and I talked about doing this just in policy or having it in an ordinance like we did, and I remember, we said, let's do it as an ordinance, just in case when these are dug up, we find out some are lead sewer laterals. Couldn't do the loan to those without it being in an ordinance. So we weren't trying to overcomplicate things by making extra ordinances, but that's why we, we did. So far, to my knowledge, none have come up, uh, that, that, were those lead sewer laterals or water laterals?
There was one.
Okay.
Only one that was led and in this situation, um, it would have cost the city more money to process that and get the government, the, the state funding than to just pay for it.
Yes.
So that was
So it was great that we only found one, you know.
That's a, that's a
Uh, phase one, right?
I heard.
That's correct.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Uh, this one seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Opposed. Motion carries. So we'll come back with ordinance amendment. Next item is request to re-surface slash pave the skate rink at the athletic field. I was trying to figure out why this was a request, because I think I thought it was already in the plan.
It's, um, the request to use the money from the borrowing.
It's from the.
The borrowing.
It says, the Parks Committee approved your recommendation to use funding from the borrowing to re-surface and pave the skating rinks and to install the other amenities.
The, I think that that, my understanding is that the borrowing didn't expressly, prior to issuing it, didn't expressly list this use, correct? So now we need to approve a transfer of that.
I think it's just, yeah, so I'll just explain real quick. It's just gotten a little money, because the borrowing is very specific. It says the tennis courts. And we've been, because the council approved the plan for Hillside Park to be like mostly improvements and not like putting the full loan.
The full loan.
Like new courts in, we're now using that money to do that. And so there's been some discussion of like, oh, because the borrowing said tennis courts, we have to. It's like, I guess that was what we wanted to come back to. I don't think any borrower says, you have to use it just for tennis courts, right? We can kind of, I think, get away with using it for some different recreation things that are within that kind of same vein. And so right now, we're looking at using that money for resurfacing, putting in the accessible, you know, things that Hillside plus than this, we thought was appropriate, but we also wanted to make it on the up and up. So Jerry, I think Jerry was the one who, he and Tony, like, looked through the different items and thought that we should bring it to council. Just to be sure. Just to, like, yeah, make sure that we're all on the up and up.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Jared, second by, um.
I gotta say.
To approve the request to use those funds for that project, all in favor.
Aye.
We have, oh, sorry, sure, go ahead. Yeah, I just have a few questions on the map. So you're gonna, you're gonna put in a tennis court, and you're also gonna make a basketball court, and then you got this big open space here in the middle. In the middle. I'm just curious why the open space, why you need to do another. We might do like four square or something, but we didn't want to like shove a bunch of things in there, because with these, with, the way it's gonna be is we're gonna, there'll be like removable posts, because we're gonna take them out because it's a big skating rink. So there's the system that Jerry has, that where these things are gonna be taken out. And so the other thing was, like, what's really necessary? You know, and so we didn't want to like put in too much. At some point, we could always put another court in the middle if we needed to and paint lines, but right now, we thought that was kind of sufficient to separate those two uses. If you're like playing tennis here, you're having basketball here, it will leave a space in between those two.
I think it won't be like the courts up on Hillside, or it won't have that surface. This would just be lined asphalt.
Oh, yeah.
And the reason for that is, is because we covered that with ice.
That was my next question is, how can you cover ice on courts, right? It's a very, it's kind of just.
It's very basic.
It's very basic to, it's more how do you put courts under what we use for ice? So it's super basic. Super basic.
And I can prove that with the installer about that. Can we put ice on these things? They're usually, you know, asphalt.
Then the other question is, when you're playing basketball, are you gonna have a fence there so that the basketball doesn't go into the tennis court?
Details to be determined.
Just, there won't be a fence between the two.
No.
I mean, if we have to, and it gets bad, there's always like a net system that you could kind of do between the two. We'll kind of, from a Parks Committee and from Jerry, the public works, we're gonna see how this goes. This is kind of like our interpretation of a multi-use court, so that, like in the summer, when baseball and stuff's going on, and people can do other things out there. And so we're gonna kind of see how it goes.
So the basketball court could be a multi-purpose court?
Yeah.
You can do that.
Okay. So right now, we're, that was my other, going with the two basketball, going with tennis, kind of seeing how that goes. Okay, Jerry?
And just to confirm, you're paving the whole one seventy-five by one fifteen on that rink, not just the two little cars?
Yeah, the whole thing will be paved. Yeah, and plus a little parking area, and then the kind of fence along where you see.
The parking will be paved, or?
Nope, but just more designated and regraded.
And the other part of resurfacing is that when we redid the water lines back there, we actually cut into it.
Right now.
So now we can hit stones. I mean, this been, you know, over, but there's life on it, so.
Great. Yeah, basic. All right. Basic. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item, North Coast Car Show. There are three requests. One is to open container at the harbor table, which we've done before. Another is to place temporary no parking signs on the west side of Second Avenue, so that we can ensure safe travel for EMS. And the third, to request the use of Oma Street property for spectator parking. And I believe we've done all of those before. And that seems to be a really great location for this event. Does anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pull all three together for a second then.
Okay, motion by Tom, second by Jared, to approve the three requests. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next is our other request from the city to convey property to Hackers and Larson near Drabble Pit Road to have a larger packet. I, um, I was thinking that this was gonna go to the public or to planning commission first, but it sounds like they want to get an idea of how the council feels about it, so they don't spend money ahead of time. But we just were saying that we wanted people to do a certified survey to know what we're dealing with. So I don't know if anyone has a motion on this at this time. To forward a planning commission for formal review, including a certified survey map.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion by Tom. What's the motion? To forward to planning commission for formal review and a cert, including a certified survey map. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
And just for a comment on this one, I think that that request will be well received by the applicant, if it's submitted without a certified survey. I'd say that our ordinance there isn't the absolute requirement that we, the council can tell them they have, because the ordinance doesn't currently have that. I think that what they were asking, though, isn't weighing in, and what we're asking for is weighing in on council, like, what do you think is most likely to get this gone and get this approved? We want to see this type of survey. And that's this, this feedback.
Okay, is there any other discussion or questions or comments? I guess going back to kind of the memo that was written by Randy, you know, like, it would be nice if we had kind of like a little thing like that, you know, like, yeah, it wasn't clear to me exactly what was being asked, honestly.
And I think, for my understanding, the clarification of what's being requested here is, is not that they need to give a CSM right now. It's if they, if this is approved, in order to get this as a buildable lot, they will have to have a CSM that combines the vacated portion with their current parcel. And that requires a lot of upfront work. So it was a, kind of like we're doing, we did before, testing the waters. There absolutely no way council's ever gonna approve this request. So not looking forward to it. Not looking to get the expenses upfront to even move this any further. That was my understanding.
That's different than sending this to planning commission. Like, because.
Not necessarily.
It's different than requiring a certified survey.
Yes. Because realistically, and that's how that, the CSM cannot and wouldn't be completed until after council acts on the vacated message, because that CSM is going to combine their existing lot with the vacated portion as one buildable lot. So that request, does that make sense? That, that request is, is that, that the CSM comes in after, in order to combine them as a lot.
So what I was hearing from council was that you wanted a certified survey map ahead of time, so that we had a better map to work with?
I think that, correct, if council doesn't need certified survey map, we need a survey to show the exact distance about the.
Oh.
Certified survey map is gonna combine the lots into one buildable parcel.
Thank you.
So yes, we want a survey.
We wanted surveys.
Yes. And then all the measurements, everything that they do on that survey, surveyor uses, those same measurements can be put into the certified survey that gets approved later on, so they don't have to remeasure, it's not double work there. But council is asking, yes, we need, we want measurements from a survey to go to planning commission. And then if approved, it all gets combined in a certified survey.
Okay. Well, and, yeah, and some of the things like, what's the benefit to the property or what's the benefit to the city? You know, what action, what will this action hinder development in the future? I mean, some of these things the planning commission does kind of work through a little bit, but for me, like, when I look at this map, I'm like, whoa, you know, like, it's all over the place. And I, I would like to have a very lined-up proposal, evidence, trade-offs, at least, like, just, because I'm the planning commission, too, because like, I think sometimes I talk to the planning commission members on how they handle these, and, oh, you're planning commission, maybe you could talk about it, because my impression was, most of them, you just approve, but if there's questions or non-favorable information from like adjacent landowners, then you guys are like, eh, so you guys really don't have good criteria, really, for recommending approval or not. Is that, is that what you're saying or not?
That is correct.
So that's, the criteria we have is more for architectural review and that sort of thing?
And the statutes and the ordinance requirements for vacating are, that you cannot vacate a roadway that land lots a parcel. And the only other standard is that it's in the public interest. So it's a very broad standard. Those aren't the only two statutory or ordinance requirements.
Okay. So the public interest one is interesting, because like on the last one that we just proved, originally the planning commission did a motion to deny it.
To get discussion. That was only to get discussion.
And then they.
And then it passed unanimously to move on to council for approval.
Right, but that was solely on discussion on adjacent landowners in, like, input. I just think it's weird. I guess I would like to, I'd like to have a little bit more information from like administration on, like, what's the benefit, what's the gain? Oh, there's no trade-offs? You know, that kind of stuff. Good thoughts, Jerry? Tracy? I mean, they're really bringing it to a snub, they want all this money into it. And so can someone speak to what they want to do? So is it reasonable? I mean, we've, now you've been like talking about what they want to do, let's find out.
That is the ultimate question, you're exactly right. You look at the map, which is difficult to identify, and the request was, what do you think? Let's take it to council to see if it'll be okay. Well, what do you say, we actually get a real plan from an attorney who is now representing a client and not just throw a flag up in the wind, so you guys actually understand black and white and color photos, if that just needs to be done nicely? So you guys can understand that we can take care of this in one month, as opposed to, and I will say, and not just in, you know, sort of in attack mode or whatever, it's just, you know, thirty-two years is what I counted back on when this, you know, particular piece of legislation, let's say, was looked at and reviewed last time by the city. So maybe that needs to be looked at a little bit more, too, you know, more clarification, because there should be just a simple, here's the form, you need to provide this, and this, and this, and if you're gonna provide a map, you also said, you had the hackers on board, and there was no mention of talking with Larson. And you're asking.
Sandy hasn't talked to them yet.
Right. And at that point in time, I'm sort of as the new guy, and this is, you know, this is not my first rodeo, I've been doing this for a while, so this is about as loose as I've ever seen. And that's okay, it's just that we need to maybe tighten our ship up, so that we can get them to put it right in the bottle that we want, say, that's it, there you go, done with it.
And the official petition will have to have the neighbors sign off and all that.
And I know that, but someone else in this position, in this board, or the other board.
It will cost them money. I mean, they're trying to save money.
Absolutely.
So, but.
I wonder, maybe straight answers, it costs less than sixty minutes every council meeting once a month, that helps some people out.
And I think for this informal request to come forward, I think, I know there've been somewhere, there's been a discussion of like vacating a portion of an alleyway that is used. And they say, hey, is there any possibility? I don't remember exactly where it was, but any possibility that we're going to vacate this? And we can tell them, absolutely not, there's no way, city's gonna agree to that. That's what they're looking for, this would want those, like, absolutely not, no way type situations.
I don't think we can give.
We don't know.
Yeah, and I don't think we can give the guarantee of this either.
Oh, no.
Correct.
There's no guarantee of this gonna be approved.
So I don't really know what we're supposed to give.
If they want to hear, we're all gonna say no.
They want to hear, if it's dead in the water, and they should not even pursue it. And I guess for my example there, if that vacation were to vacate the, that might've been one that came through.
That street.
The section, the street that goes right behind this big building, behind, between what used to be Ross Marine.
Oh.
And we were gonna say, absolutely not, there's no way that'll be approved. That's the type of thing that they're asking. That was one that came through, and it was pretty clear that was never going to be considered. And even if we tell them we're never going to consider this, they can still submit a formal petition to planning commission.
Absolutely.
And it still has to go through that whole process of consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So right now, we have a motion and a second to forward this to planning commission with a survey.
To instruct them to have a.
To submit.
To submit a petition, a final petition, or a formal, a complete petition to planning commission.
Yes. Action.
With the survey.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay. Next, we have this correspondence in tab nine and tab ten. Tab nine, I believe, is just informational.
Absolutely.
Has been obtained as normal.
I heard it was aquatic muffins a few years ago, and didn't want to ruffle any feathers. Now that's honk, 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 honk. So anyway, so just FYI, and Chief Knight on the background paperwork, and called down the Ryan Mander, and kind of figured it out, so, cost us a, make one race.
Okay, and then the watch for ambulance services, this is not anything that is before us for approval by any means. This is a vision of theirs, looking at the ideal scenario in a world of unlimited dollars, what it would take to actually do what we want to do theoretically, which is to run a twenty-four-seven ambulance service, fully, with all the staff you need. And they wanted to bring this forward just to get on our radar, because we're going to be having to renegotiate our contracts with our neighbors, with the EMS agreements that we have with them currently. And this is, you know, this is something that, if there were any of it that they actually wanted to pursue, we have to go to personnel and finance first. You know, I just want to say, this is not anything that we need to get worried about. Yeah, I would, now that it's public, I'm afraid the public is gonna think this is what we want to do, and does that mean we're having another referendum? And, you know, no, this is not where we are with this. It's just, this was their high in the sky, ideal scenario that they came forward with. At the same time, we're having these, this planning grant to help the county-wide discussion that. At the same time, we're having these, this planning grant to help the countywide discussion that we are a part of with what that might look like. And so there may not be a need for us to run our old ambulance service 24/7 in the future. So, you know, that's literally happening now.
That was on last month's agenda, right?
And that was just informational because it's just a grant that we apply for.
So this isn't the same thing?
No, different thing, different thing altogether that they came forward with. And it's just, um,
Okay.
Interesting timing. So the planning grant is just FYI, is going to be, um, I think if they're just a quick turnaround, they're looking to turn it around like within five to six months. Because then they want to put out the grant for the actual, whatever you're gonna do, then you can apply for a grant to help with that too. And this is all money, um, just for background, that came with the shared revenue agreement that we got passed last year where, um, it is now tied to sales tax and there's a certain amount of money, you know, so 1% of, of sales tax goes to shared revenue. It's for all local municipalities, towns and cities and villages. And so everybody got their dollar amount in addition to what you normally got. So we had an extra hundred and whatever thousand dollars.
Hundred and sixty-one.
That we used to hire another EMT with. And then on top of that, they put inside this pot of money that they wanted to be put into an innovation account. They wanted to make it tied to.